Okay, we're gonna begin the Tuesday, June 27, 2023, public hearing. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Here. I'd ask that everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No moved. Second?
We have a motion in a second. Push the button again. And we're all voting? Okay, now we go to awards and proclamations. Today, we begin by recognizing Parks and Recreation Month. Parks and recreation areas are the beating heart of our cities and towns, providing space where families gather, kids play, and individuals appreciate the beauty of nature. These spaces serve as sanctuaries and spaces for adventure. They foster physical well-being and social connections that are important in our overall happiness and quality of life. We will now read the proclamation. Commissioner Baca, would you please read the proclamation?
Yes, thank you Chair. So, good morning, everyone. The proclamation is Parks Open Space and Cultural Arts Month, July 1 through July 31, 2023. Whereas Adams County is dedicated to responsibly serving the community with integrity and innovation, offering inclusivity for all families and businesses. And whereas Adams County Parks Open Space and Cultural Arts exist to significantly enhance quality of life and enrich our communities and inspire. And whereas Parks Open Space and Cultural Arts is an integral, integral part of communities throughout this country, including Adams County. And whereas Parks Open Space and Cultural Arts promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people in our communities. These spaces promote time spent in nature, which positively impact mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being. And whereas Parks Open Space and Cultural Arts programming and installations are critical to a community's economic prosperity through increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks Open Space and Cultural Arts is fundamental to the environment, well-being of our community, and is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate, recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas Adams County recognizes the benefits derived from Parks Open Space and Cultural Arts resources. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims the month of July as National Parks Open Space and Cultural Arts Month, with special recognition and appreciation for the team behind planning, managing, and maintaining our county's park system, open spaces, and cultural arts. We urge all residents to celebrate the achievements of this outstanding team and promote the importance of public recreation spaces and the natural beauty of our communities and our nation. Signed by all of the Commissioners. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Parks Open Space and Cultural Arts Director Byron Fanning to the podium to share a few words.
Thank you Commissioner, and thank you for proclaiming July Parks Open Space and Cultural Arts Month in Adams County. I have a few stats to share you, with you about our industry nationally. Eighty-four percent of adults seek high-quality parks and recreation when choosing a place to live. Nine in ten people agree Parks and Recreation is an important service provided by their local government. In the United States, eighty-six percent of adults think it is helpful that they and their families have access to the outdoors and nature during stressful times. Local park and recreation agencies collectively manage more than 11 million acres of open space across the United States. According to N RPA's Economic Impact of Local Parks Report, local public park and recreation agencies in the United States generated nearly $218 billion in economic activity and supported almost 1.3 million jobs that boosted labor income by more than $68 billion from their operations and capital spending in 2019. In Adams County, we are blessed to have the most talented Parks Open and Space and Cultural Arts staff in the United States. In Adams County, I want to thank our management and supervisory team who keep things running, and all of the department staff who contribute to the amazing things we're able to do. Could everyone here this morning from Parks Open Space and Cultural Arts please stand? And last but not least, I want to thank you, the Board of County Commissioners and our ELT, for supporting the great work that we do for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much Director Fanning. Do we have any comments from the Commissioners? Uh, let me go where we are. I don't know how to use it. Who, okay, Eva Henry?
Technology. I, I wanna, you know, appreciate Byron and you and your staff. You've done amazing work with our community and our parks and everything. I also want to thank the, the residents of Adams County who voted for our Parks and Open Space Parks. And here's, here's the interesting thing. This was in 2020, when people were wondering if the world was gonna end. A lot of people were suffering financially because they couldn't work because we had the stay-at-home orders. Even despite all those economic downturns, our open space won by 82%. That's 184,000 people voted for our open space. Also, we had a facilities tax on there also, and that was 74.9%. Over 165,000 people wants quality facilities for the residents of Adams County. That's more people that voted for any Commissioner that sits up here. Voted for the open space and for the facilities. And I think that, that says volumes. That doesn't matter what party you belong to, or if you vote or you don't vote. It shows that our communities really appreciate quality facilities and parks and open space. So, thank you Byron for, for being, leading that effort. I really appreciate it. And to our, you know, our board, our, our Open Space Board, I appreciate all the work that they put into it also. So, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Henry. I'm gonna go down the line. Commissioner Emma Pinter?
Sure. Um, thank you so much. It's really an honor to be able to celebrate Parks and Open Space. I think for a lot of us, our open space, our trail system and our parks are the beating heart of community. It's where people gather, whether you're coming to the fair, or you're just coming to a fishing derby, or you're coming out to take a walk with your pets. It's a real joy to see how active our spaces are. And I know it's a lot of acreage to care for, and I know it's really complex. And so, I'm really grateful that the voters have supported it, and I think it reflects how much we use those natural spaces as respite during times of stress and times of celebration during times of joy. I've been to quite a number of birthday parties and picnics at various parks, and I know that I, chatting with my neighbors, are coming out for Stars and Stripes July 3rd. Um, and all of those celebrations and all their different forms really commemorate the joy it is to be in Adams County in Colorado, and it really, I think, is a lot of our soul. So, um, thank you so much for your work to care for something that is so connective to how we relate to each other and community.
Commissioner Baca?
Thank you Chair. Thank you Byron for being here, and certainly thank you to the park staff from Adams County. And I see our neighbors are here as well, and we'll get to all of you in just a moment. I see Brighton is here, some of our other neighbors. We have some grant funding to give out today. Um, I just wanna highlight, we have a state park here in Adams County, and they don't get a lot of traction for some reason, but it, get out in the outdoors this summer. I mean, this, the rain, the continuous rain we had in June. Bar Lake is full to the brim. It is absolutely beautiful. They had a health and wellness expo this past weekend out at their place. They do a lot of programming, a lot of friendly programming for families. They do pontoon rides, they do eagle, you could go see the eagle's nest, fishing, so all kinds of activities for our families here in Adams County. It makes me so proud to, uh, I'm a former Parks employee, former Parks Board member for the city of Brighton, and then to be a county commissioner and be a steward of the funding approved by the voters of Adams County, and that there's a shareback of funding that we give to our municipalities and also to other partners. Rocky Mountain Bird Conservatory is one, Bar Lake is another one. Cannot thank all of the collaboration and all the parties involved here in Adams County, where we put quality of life and our residents first. And I cannot thank all of the, the parks workers and employees here in the room with us today, your advocacy for parks, open space, for clean air, the environment. Get out and enjoy the parks this summer, it's gonna be beautiful. So, thank you so much.
And comes from the Adams County Open Space Sales Tax, which is passed by the Adams County voters in 1999, and as Commissioner Henry mentioned, they were approved, re-approved again in 2020, too. That tax will go on indefinitely. Funds for this grant cycle were collected in the second half of 2022. The Open Space Advisory Board reviewed 21 grant applications for this grant cycle. Following the recommendations of the Advisory Board, the Board of County Commissioners is awarding funding for all 21 projects today. The funding awarded today will support sustainable accessible trails, the development and renovation of parks throughout the county, and new event shelters, and of course, replace and treatment of trees. The success of this program lies in the hands of our Open Space Advisory Board members. They volunteer their time and review applications, recommend funding for projects that have great benefit to the county. Our Advisory Board members are, and if you're here, would you please stand? Charles Michael Coslow, our Chair, Mark Humbert, Kristi Dowling, Rolando Melgoza, Cindy Barnes, and Jason McElDowney. They put in a lot of effort, whether here or not, let's give them a round of applause. Okay, so in the interest of time, we're gonna present all the awards in front of the dais. Please come forward when we announce your project, and we will take a large group photo at the very end, and if anyone wants individual project, uh, photos, you can meet with a photographer in the lobby afterwards. All right, we'll be down right now. Okay, team. We're gonna have to, uh, all right, the first award goes to the Bennett Park and Recreation District. We are pleased to present an award for roof repairs in the amount of $58,000, and a mini grant for a pool cover in the amount of $21,000. Lila Schaub, Director of the District, would you please come forward and accept your award?
Okay, the next three awards go to the City of Thornton. Adams County Open Space Sales Tax is awarding funding for the Niiver, Niiver Open Space Improvements Project in the amount of $910,000. An award for the playground and nat, nature play rehab and installation project in the amount of $1,227,500. And a mini grant for the ball field backstops and baselines for $25,000. Representatives from Thornton, please come forward to accept your certificates. All right, the City of North Glenn is receiving three awards. Fox Run Playground for $250,000, Aquatic Adventure Cross Project for $300,000, and a mini grant for Trail Maps Signage and Stewardship Project in the amount of $25,000. Joining us today is Mayor Lady, is she here? Nooo, I'm heartbroken. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Member Chris Unger and staff, and city staff, please come forward to accept your awards.
That was me, you're now, you're next.
Not paying attention today. All right, Adams County has awarded themselves two open space grants. The first project is for the City View Park renovation in the amount of $1,250,000, and the second is for Path to Wellness for $375,000. Jason Baines, Manager of Planning, Design, and Construction and Staff, if you would like to come forward and accept your award.
Our next award goes to the City of Brighton. The City of Brighton is being awarded 1.7, um, 1, well, I'll do it this way, $1,750,000 for the Benedict Park Improvement Projects. Kyle Sylvester, Assistant Director, please come forward from the Town of Brighton to accept your award.
All right, the next three awards go to the Town of Bennett. The first award is for $140,000 for the Highway 79 Permanent Trail Construction Phase II, $225,000 for Troupe Park Phase VI, and a mini grant for $25,000 for the purchase of open space bleachers. And I have Danetta Rivolakaba, Director of Finance, and Robin Price, Director of Public Works, please come on down, claim your prize.
Okay, next we have is the City of Commerce City. They are being awarded two open space grants. The first grant is for $260,000 for their open space restorations project, and the second is a mini grant for the single rider golf cart purchase. Is there a representative from Commerce City, please come down?
Yes, here she come.
The City of Westminster is receiving a mini grant for an open space utility vehicle acquisition in the amount of $25,000. Is it Liam? I won't even try to attempt your last name, Liam. Natural Resource Specialist and Spencer Thomas, Open Space For Person, are here today representing Westminster, please come forward to accept your awards.
All right, our next awards go to the Highland Hills Parks and Recreation District. All right, our next awards go to the Highland Hills Parks and Recreation District. The first is for $1,866,240 for the Highland Hills Sports Complex Phase I Renovation Project. And the second is a mini grant in the amount of $25,000 for the Carol Butts Park Master Plan. Skylar Beck, Deputy Director, and Bob Adams, Recreation Director, please come forward and collect your award.
Our next award is to the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Partnership. They're receiving an award for their environmental education program, Spark, Inspire, Embrace. This award is for $116,129. Mo Fair, Executive Director of Sand Creek Regional Greenway Partnership, come on down.
Okay, the final award goes to Strasburg Metro Parks and Rec District for the Wolf Creek Run Athletic Fields renovation in the amount of $442,000. Angela Graff, please come on down to accept your award. Okay, we want to thank all of those who participated, and we were pleased to be funding these projects today. To read more about these individual projects, please go to adco.gov.org, and you can read more about each of them. At this time, we'd ask all the award recipients to come down for a group photo. After that photo, when the award recipients are done with that photo, they could go out to the hall, and then we're going to ask all the Parks and Open Space staff to come down for a photo with us. So, we're going to do two photos. So, now all the award recipients, please come on down for a group photo. All right, after we get this crew out, we want all our internal crew to come on down for a photo, please. Yes. Okay, Adams County Park Staff, please come on down. Are you able to get over this, or is this in it? Is this in the way? It is what it is. Yeah. I don't think this moves, does it? It's going to be connected to something. Does it fold up? That's one of the funnest things we do each year, is, well, give out money for good causes. I mean, it's a lot of fun. All right, we're moving on to public comment. Does anyone sign up for public comment?
Chair, I do have one person signed up for general comment, and one person signed up for today's land use case.
Okay, who's this person signed up for general comment?
Dan Hoff.
Dan, are you in the audience? Please feel free to come forward, state your full name for the record, and your address, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, I'm Dan Hoff, and I'm from Strasburg, Colorado, and my address is 56398 East 22nd Place, 80136.
Go ahead, Dan.
Well, before I begin, I want to say that we have a great Park and Rec District in Strasburg, and they are advancing us forward monumentally. They're great, so wanted to put that out there. Well, I come to you today speaking both as a resident and as the Superintendent of Schools of Strasburg School District 31J. As a resident, I want to say thank you. Thank you for the Click Fix application, thank you for being responsible for citizens' request. As the Click Fix application, in my opinion, and from my experiences, has always had a great response time, the issues are addressed, and that they are followed up on. That is one of those things that we don't always hear in county governance, is that we get follow-up and that type of reaction, and I'm here to advocate on behalf of that, that there is response. We just have to do the work and put in the request, and they do happen. So, use me as a testament, I'll go on the record as this right now, saying that it is a great application and a great response time, and Adams County is doing their due diligence with those requests. So, again, here as an advocate, as a resident of Strasburg, to support your needs. Now, as a superintendent, I'm here to request support, assistance, equitable partnership, and next step direction. Strasburg is unincorporated. It's my current understanding that the town falls under Adams County Guide of Governance and Operations. I may be mistaken on this, but that's why I'm here again today, is to affirm this. I have not gotten triangulation on the exact process. If that is indeed factual, please help me as a superintendent to ensure the safety of our estimated 13 students who attend school in a four-block radius. We have no sidewalks, or limited sidewalks. Our students walk in the street to school of this fast-growing in-bedroom community. This is a potential tragedy in the making. I have anxiety every morning when I see our kids walking to school. The school district has now installed sidewalks in between our campuses, on our property, so that they can get to every school from one another to try to avoid this. That's come, of course, at a substantial cost to us, and we look forward to promoting this to our students, parents, and community, to use those internal sidewalks to mitigate the potential risk. In my previous experiences, schools are highly prioritized for sidewalks and sidewalk repair within 100 feet of a school. Usually, they rise to the level of first priority. There is also the issue of ADA compliance. We have no ramps, we have no ability and crumbling shoulders, and no sidewalks. I fear for those that may be wheelchair-bound. Let me be clear, I understand the associated cost, it's strategic planning that goes into this type of request, and that we quote, "put it on the list." That is a long list of capital improvements that occur throughout a county. That is why I'm here today. My request is to be minimal and prudent fiscally with my request. I request that Wagner and Colorado have sidewalks installed with ADA compliance ramps. The burden currently is to be incurred by schools, from my understanding, don't believe that to be completely factual. This is estimated to be a half-mile of sidewalks. Not a great ask, but a substantial safety and upgrade to the town of Strasburg to help our students and their safety. May this request be reprioritized. May we work together for the safety support in entirely avoidable tragedy that may occur. My role is to always make decisions with students in mind, and we'll vote.
That passes unanimously. Moving on to new business. County Manager, I don't see you have anything. County Attorney, you don't have anything?
I do not.
Okay, we're going to take five minutes to... Is five minutes enough time to get set up for the land use? Five minutes it is. We will reconvene in five minutes. Going to reconvene the land use portion of the public hearing for June 27, 2023. It's all yours, staff.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Leah Campbell. I'm a planner with the Community Economic Development Department, and the case before you this morning is VAC 2023-4 Mustang Acres Lot 7B and Lot 8B Roadway Vacation. The request is for a roadway vacation to vacate unimproved right-of-way and easements within the Mustang Acres subdivision. This request was originally heard before you on June 6, and it was continued to the June 20 Board of County Commissioners' hearing, and then, at the request of the applicant, continued again from the June 20 hearing until this morning, June 27. So, here's an aerial view of the subject right-of-way. It's to the west of the property at 15229 Navajo Street, and to the east of this... To the east of this unaddressed parcel right here, that fronts on 152nd. And here's a more zoomed-in picture of the subject right-of-way, to give you a closer view. Here's the current zoning map. The subject parcel and all surrounding parcels are zoned agricultural 1. The purpose of this district is to provide a rural, single-family dwelling district with limited farming uses. And here's the future land use map. The subject parcel and all surrounding parcels have the future land use designation of residential low. This category is appropriate for suburban and exurban areas in Adams County, primarily consisting of single-family dwellings. And here's the criteria for right-of-way vacation approval. One, it complies with development standards and original conditions of approval. Two, non-conforming lots are not created, and there's no increase in nonconformity. It's consistent with the purpose and intent of the subdivision regulations. There's no detriment to the public health, safety, and welfare. No adjoining land is left without access to an established public road. And if the roadway is a state or federal highway, the vacation has been approved by the State Transportation Commission. So, here is the proposed vacation plat. In the middle, you can see the subject right-of-way. It's about 157 feet long by 50 feet wide, and then the two easements on the east and west, they're about 157 feet long by 10 feet wide each. And last time, there was concern about a ditch. The ditch of concern is actually in the county's right-of-way on 152nd, and should not at all be affected by this vacation. Also, just for a little more information, there's lot lines here, but these will be vacated, so it'll be two lots instead of four lots. And here are my pictures from my site visit. This is looking into the subject right-of-way. The right-of-way is about right here. This is looking across 157th to the south, sorry, 152nd to the south. Here, we're looking west along 152nd Avenue, and here, we're looking east along 152nd Avenue. So, all budding property owners were notified of this request. Three notifications were sent, and one comment was received. This comment raised concerns about irrigation water rights, building code violations on the lot to the east of the subject right-of-way, and development of the vacant lot to the west of the subject right-of-way. We did talk about those building code violations last- We did talk about those building code violations last time. I'm happy to discuss them further if you have more questions. And the vacant lot to the west can be developed regardless of this request, so it's unaffected by this request, and we can answer more questions about the water rights. I did kind of go over that in the plat slide, but staff is available to answer more questions about it. All referral agencies were notified, and no comments were received from any of them. So in the case of VAC 2023-00004, staff recommends approval of the subject request with six findings of fact. Here are the recommended findings of fact, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, do you have any questions for staff? I don't see anyone jumping up. Is the applicant here? If they would please come forward. You state your full name and your address for the record, and tell us a bit about your request.
I'm Thomas Ray, 15348 Spruce Street, Brumfield, Colorado, 80023, and the request is just to vacate the roadway. I don't have anything to add to what staff just communicated.
Why are we doing this today?
Why are we having all this? Has somebody objected?
No, I meant, I'm so sorry. I'm going to ask this for staff. What is the purpose of why we're vacating this road, this right-of-way?
It was never developed, so it was originally platted, I think in the '60s, and it was... the roadway was, or the right-of-way was platted as Osage Street, and then it was never developed. There's three lots to the north that also had right-of-way platted within them, and they all vacated that in the '80s, and for some reason, these lots were not included in that vacation, so it's just vacating undeveloped right-of-way that we've never used.
Kind of cleaning up the lines, I guess.
Correct.
Are there any others that aren't being requested today that we will see in the future?
No, so this will complete the, like, section of right-of-way that was platted originally.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you as well.
That was simple. At this time, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward, state your full name for the record, and your address.
My name is Elizabeth Upton. I live at 15288 Navajo Street, Brumfield, Colorado, 80023.
Please feel free.
And I would like to request the Planning Department and the Board further develop this revised map when these vacancies are approved, to ensure that irrigation is protected. In the subdivision to the west, North Star Estates, throughout that community, irrigation is defined on those plat maps of having an 18-foot easement wherever irrigation runs. So on this plat map that you saw, I believe that is Lot 7, farthest to the left. There is an irrigation ditch. Yeah, farthest to the left, Lot 7. I, myself, and other residents in this community, would like to see that identified on here and along 152nd. I have previously spoken with some members in your right-of-way department with regards to North Star Estates, because we, as a board of irrigation, are having some trouble with a resident in that neighborhood as well, allowing us access to maintain these ditches. And to protect the integrity of this neighborhood moving forward, because it is my belief that Mr. Ray has plans to build on this lot and the one that he purchased adjacent, this property right next to my home, is to subdivide these and build new homes. If that is the plan, that's okay. I just want to ensure that we, as a community, maintain the integrity of that irrigation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak that has a question? CNN will bring it back to the Board. I'm going to go ahead and ask staff, can you help give us some context around the history of this situation with the ditches, and what is required to be on the plats, and et cetera?
Right, so the two, or the ditch that she's talking about is on the left of your plat there, on the west side of the property. It is, after our meeting a few weeks ago, I did some research with Ian Cortez, our right-of-way supervisor. That is an easement that has been owned by Freiko. It's a Freiko ditch that goes through there. Nothing in this vacation plat will affect that right in the Freiko ditch. Additionally, in the letter that she provided, she also talked about the ditch to the south of this property, which is within county right-of-way, so this will not affect that as either. The only part that the vacation plat is doing here is vacating the county's rights, not any other third-party rights. So the easement to maintain the irrigation into that property is still maintained and is still there.
Okay, if I might, that easement still exists, notwithstanding anything that we're doing today.
Correct.
Today's action only affects the county's rights to our own right-of-way, the one that goes north-south.
Correct.
Okay. And it does, this plat does reflect the easement of the ditch on the left-hand side of the screen?
I actually do think that where it says there, that's the vacation of the right-of-way that happened in 2008. The ditch that is there has been there since around the '60s, so it is a prescriptive easement that is there with the, with Freiko ditch.
But it's not reflected on this? Because I saw someone circling it, but I can't read that.
Right. That circle there just says reception number 2008. It's a right-of-way vacation from 2008.
Okay, so in our plats, do we typically put in other easements?
It depends on the situation. If the people that own the easements are signing off on the plat. If they aren't, then we usually don't notate those.
Okay, and I'm going to ask if, until someone else has a question. If you don't put it on this plat, then how is somebody in the future supposed to rely or discover that there's an easement across this property?
So it's a prescriptive easement, so it's there by use. So right now, there is a ditch on that property that is available in there by use.
There's no, there's no recorded easement, is what you're telling me?
Freiko never recorded their easement on there.
Because it's not recorded, it's not on the plat?
Correct.
So in order for it to be recorded, somebody would have to go to court and get a judgment saying there's a prescriptive easement, or?
I prefer not to get quite that into the weeds on the legal issues that don't involve us, if we could avoid that.
Okay, so it sounds like what I'm hearing is that that is something for the ditch company to work out through the courts, and not to have happen in this unrelated, but sort of within proximity issue. Okay?
Correct.
Any questions for staff, or any comments? No? All right, back to the Board then. I mean, we're at the Board. Do you guys have any, any motions?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the subject request, VAC 2023-4, with six findings of fact.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I will second that, Chair.
Okay, we're going to vote. All right, this passes 5-0, and we are adjourned for the day.